Okay. It's nine AM. I am going to call the meeting of the Cottonton County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, September twenty seventh, twenty twenty two. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Cindy, would you lead us today?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. I would also remind everyone, if you have a cell phone, if you could please silence it. If you need to take a call, if you get stuff out into the hall, we are also streaming live on YouTube. Item number two, call for public comment. Public comment will still be taken by individuals on items that are not on the agenda, and they may call those in at six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven, and we will address those during the open part of our meeting. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any for fellow commissioners?
No.
Nope.
All right. Item number four, action to approve the September twenty seventh, twenty twenty two agenda. Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the September twentieth, twenty twenty two minutes of the Cottonton County Board of Commissioners. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any additions or corrections?
Yes, I have one thing. It is an addition. I'd like to call a personnel matter for executive session on number eleven.
We're doing the minutes.
Pardon?
We're doing the minutes right now.
Oh, okay.
For a blast.
All right. So no additions or corrections. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That motion carries. All right. Item number six. This is our final public hearing, and we will be doing the adoption of the Cottonton County Provisional Budget. So first, I will open up the public hearing on the twenty twenty three Cottonton County Provisional Budget. For anyone from the public who would like to speak on behalf of the Provisional Budget. I'm not seeing anyone, so I will close the public hearing. And now I will open it up to the fellow board members. Is there any discussion anyone wants to have on the Provisional Budget? All right. With that, then, we'll move on to item number seven. Action to adopt the twenty twenty three Cottonton County Provisional Budget and accompanying resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Provisional Budget.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. Any other comments or questions?
Just one comment, just so people know that you hear people talk about COVID money a lot, and so, and so we did, we did get some, and so how we're applying that is for personnel for salaries. That's how we're doing that. That minimizes the paperwork, and that does free up some funds for some major projects, projects, especially with HVAC related projects, projects with the detention center in particular. So just so people are aware, that's probably the significant difference, if you see some differences in the number.
Right. And we've kind of been explaining that as we go every time we do that. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That motion carries.
Sending three copies of the resolution around that I have to have each of you sign, so I can send one to the Department of Revenue, save one for our file, and one for luck.
All right. Let's move on to monthly reports, then, and let's start with emergency management. With Andrew. Good morning.
Morning. So Cindy, Steve, Sherry and I have been continuing to work through the FEMA paperwork for the great job. We had the recovery scoping meeting on July twenty ninth, and we submitted our image inventory. We've been doing some, well, yesterday we had a follow-up meeting, and there are some due hours for that before our next meeting, which is mid-October. Looks like we're probably going to have to request an extension just because of, you know, the time to plan trees and stuff like that, so. As far as training goes, I attended an event, Risk Management Course in Pier on August thirtieth and thirty first, and then that was a prerequisite for the Special Events Incident Management Course as part of pre-conference training. It was kind of funny because, well, I don't know, the recommended course was actually better than the than the course that I needed to take it for. So. But then also for pre-conference training, Sherry attended the Crisis Management for School-Based Incidents. Really positive feedback from from everybody who took that course, not just Sherry, but she enjoyed it as well. And then we did, I did intermediate EOC functions September twentieth through twenty second, which was also solid course. Just getting just going to a lot of these courses, it's definitely helping as far as, you know, just learning lingo and so forth from emergency management. I mean, if anybody's taking a FEMA class, they kind of understand, you know, just all the like it's, it's just kind of dense material from time to time, and, and it's, I think, helping a lot, so. September tenth, while Sharon and Commissioner Van Dusen and I participated in Fire Ops one oh one. Super neat event. Big thank you to, you know, the fire department and especially Lieutenant Cruz, who I think spearheaded the effort to, to make that class happen. But, well, the three of us and everybody else who participated, we went through like a medical station evaluating a patient. We did repelling because just felt everybody there is, you know, certified to do that. Like a building search, like in smoky, dark conditions, and then, you know, just got to, you know, feel the heat like inside a burnt house, and I mean, they were relatively small fires, but I mean, it kind of gave us, I think, a little bit of a taste of, of kind of what they face, you know, when they're actually at a fire. And then, of course, we made the old cars into convertibles and, you know, used hydraulic tools to simulate getting a patient out of the car. Somebody out of the car that was pinned, so. Yeah. Overall excellent event, probably the most fun, if you can call it, training that I did over the last month, so. Big thank you to them. President of Lake Area Radio Club reached out to me. Their APRS antenna, antenna, APRS, and then on top of the courthouse is damaged. From my understanding, that is a piece of equipment that basically shows the location of the transmitting station. Yeah. It's, it's a ham radio thing. It's their piece of equipment, so they're gonna figure out what they want to do with that moving forward.
Do they have one on the hospital, too? All right, sorry.
Yep.
No, it's like, does it, does it play any kind of role in emergency management or is it more? Not radio world. It's, it's the ham radio world. I mean, not, not directly related to emergency management. I mean.
Sometimes when there's situations that the other radios don't work, theirs seem to, so it kind of goes hand in hand.
Yeah, I was gonna, that's basically where I was going with it was, like, they have capabilities that we certainly want to maintain and enhance if we can, because, I mean, they, they do serve a role as, you know, important communications, you know, they have important communications capabilities. If, if, you know, we were to need them, and I'm sure that they, they're all excellent guys, they would be happy to help. And then, well, last week I turned off the automatic sirens. I don't know if anybody noticed that. I, I think that they probably, most people just shoot them out at this.
I noticed.
But I figured it was late enough, and typically September is, is when they've turned them off in the past, so. I mean, overall, like, fairly uneventful month. I mean, still plugging away at a few things, and of course, trying to get some training done. Figure, you know, it's better to, to go to training and to try to improve capabilities in our office now as opposed to not collecting the training, possibly needing it.
Better be prepared.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to elaborate a little bit on the amateur radio thing, I'm a member of that club itself, and there is a portable tower that they can Hamline County can put up to, to, to connect, and in case we do lose radio communication. So they do play a vital role for emergency communications as well.
Thanks.
Lake Area Radio Club.
Yeah.
Lark.
Well, that's perfect for their exercise. Don't they actually like to turn off, like, communications, like, their state system?
That I don't know. Yeah, that I don't know. It is a full-scale exercise, I know, so it works good. Brad?
Hi, Brad.
Morning.
Morning.
How's it going today?
Good. How about with you?
Not too bad. Sunshineing.
Yep. Troy? You have something.
Thinking about something last night.
All right. Well, should we get started on our monthly balance sheet here?
Yep.
For the month of August, the bank balance, seven thousand eight hundred and one dollars. We jumped down, you'll see, collected twenty dollars in copy fees, six thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty cents in sheriff's fees collected, and five hundred and seventy-five dollars in warrant fees collected, for grand total of six thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and fifty cents. Rendered total back to eight eighty-nine fifty. Jump to the next page there, our commissary monthly balance sheet. Bank balance end of August was twenty-two thousand nine ninety-five oh three. At that time, there was thirty-three ninety-three fifty-four in the lobby ATM booking kiosk. Resident balances were three thousand eighty-seven dollars and sixty cents, commissary items and tax, not dispersed, four thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents, and the fund balance was eighteen thousand five sixty-three ninety-nine, for grand total of twenty-six thousand three eighty-eight fifty-seven. When you're pulled back to fifteen thousand, we put in there. And you'll see in the bottom there, we did county earn the thirty percent commission on all that, that five thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars that was sold, so our portion is one thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety cents.
So do you use those dollars then to repurchase items, or do you keep it like in a fund or?
Those dollars actually go back to the general fund.
There's a general fund revenue number for jail commissary sales, and that's where, that's where they go right now. So, yeah, we have three deposits totally thirty-six ninety-five four to four, which may not match your figures because they're always a month behind. Well, I can't see what came in September yet, so.
That's working out pretty good, isn't it, Brad?
Yeah, it's working out really good. Like I say, it's been a good tool for the correctional officers to use as a disciplinary action thing. If there's a fight or something like that, it has kind of cut down on some of our assaults and some of our issues that we've had in the jail, because everybody wants to keep their commissary. So we're dogged for that side of it, too, since also making the county just a little bit of, little money on the side, so. I want to jump to the next one there. Lee's got it pulled up on the big screen here. What were some numbers of the sheriff's office, some activity that we've had in the month of August? We've had, responded to five hundred and forty-six cases and calls for service, fifteen accident reports were completed. You can see the deer accidents are slowly starting to tick up already a little bit. Eighty-four warrants were served, two hundred and twenty-four civil papers were served, and two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six transport miles were served. That was twenty-one people that were transported in fourteen trips, so. Just kind of break that down a little bit for you. If you jump down to the middle of the screen there, you'll see our average daily population is sixty-seven point five two for the month of August. Our high average daily population was seventy-nine people, and that was on the ninth, and then a low was fifty-eight on the thirty-first. On the SCRAM bracelet with the twenty-four seven program, we have twenty-three people on that over the month of August, six people on the remote breath, thirty-five people on the twice daily PBT, and forty-two people on the twice weekly UA, and one person on the sweat patch for a grand total of a hundred and seven people. You can see that number climbed up a little bit over the last few months here. Say, I don't know what causes that, but have had a, some new judge in town here the last few months, kind of getting in the swing of things, so maybe that's kind of what's reflecting on some of those numbers swinging down and creeping back up again, so. Scroll on down to the bottom there, you'll see we collected thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-three cents of out-of-county contracts, six thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars in work release fees, five thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-four cents in twenty-four seven fees, and SCRAM fees that were collected were three thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars. There's no questions on that. I'll jump over. We've got a few more topics just wanted to touch base on, and to share what's been happening here. I did apply to the state, the twenty-four seven program, applied for a ten thousand dollar grant to supplement labor wages on that. Haven't heard anything back on that. Mr. Good, let you guys know, it's something that every few years, the state, if they have extra funds in their twenty-four seven balance at the state level, they try to push it back to the counties to let them apply. So I did apply for a ten thousand dollar grant for wages on, on that. So when we hear back, I'll let you guys know. The Department of Corrections just recently, last week, came through on the jail. They do a yearly inspection for our juvenile holding facility area. That'd be the new wing of the jail. They went through and inspected that. Everything is good to go. We can hold juveniles for another year, so that went good.
Still no.
When you say new is what?
The, the new part of jail in nineteen ninety-eight. Yeah. The new, newer, newer wing of the jail, and so.
I mean, there's still some issues with, there's still some issues, especially with sound separation in that.
There, there's still some, either the state.
I know the state's being reasonable about, you know, our situation, but, you know, so.
Like I say, I'm still trying to get some numbers on, looked like Joy had a comment there, but, but the newer part of the jail, like I say, we're still trying to get some numbers on replacing some ceramic toilets and sinks that, let's say, we had one that was busted about a month ago, and trying to get some numbers and trying to get that all put together, see if we can get something fixed there. Let's say that would not be a budget item. We might have just a little bit of funds there, but that's a safety issue for the staff, so. But I'll bring that forward when we get those numbers kind of put together as well, so.
The idea of a porcelain toilet in a jail cell does not make sense to me.
Yeah. So. The doors that we ordered a couple of months ago are still not in. Sounds like they're being manufactured, and when they do get in, I'll update orders.
Or custom-built.
And then.
Custom-built doors.
Yep, they're custom-making them, and gonna have to redo all the openers and closers that are, make that stuff work.
Because they don't, they don't manufacture them, you know.
Anymore.
They have to custom-make them for these older setups. Question on that. Is, how is that affecting, I guess, the capacity, the ability to manage, you know, the inmate space, basically, at not having?
It's making it difficult for staff. Like I say, that's our maximum and our medium cell block. It's, it's putting a safety constraint on our jail staff. We're making do and get by, and we've updated our, our checks. We're checking them.
Yep.
A lot more often than we typically would be. So the staff has definitely been running. They're busy, and like you say, it's, it's a safety concern, because that's one secure door that's not there. So. Kudos to the staff. They're doing a fantastic job.
Just a simple question. On that remote breath, how many of those do you have?
It kind of varies depending on, like I say, I think we keep one or two on the shelf. It's not being used, and then the state will send us another one or two if they have them, so it's just kind of a revolving number. If we have a lot of people that want them, we'll reach out to the state, and they'll see if they have them, and they'll send us some. So like I say, we've had six people on there right now, so probably have one or two sitting on the shelf, kind of back and forth. The state doesn't like to have a whole pile of them just sitting in one location that's not being used, so.
What do, what do they cost again?
Because I think that's six dollars a day.
No, I mean, what does a unit cost?
I honestly don't know what the actual unit costs. The, the state, the state actually own them, through the twenty-four seven program, the state funds, they buy them, and then it comes back and we get to use it.
So the state funds them, and they don't charge for them, but they get the revenue from them or part of the revenue.
They, they get part of the revenue, and that's where some of those SCRAM fees go back to. Yep. Like I say, that's, that's where, like I say, if we need more, they'll send them if they have them, but kind of send them back and forth. That's the same thing with our SCRAM bracelets. They go back and forth to other agencies amongst the states. Yep.
Great.
That's all I have.
Very good. Does anyone else have any other questions? Brad?
Thank you, Brad.
All right. Thanks, Brad. Okay, we'll move on then to item number, number nine, action to approve a change order for the courthouse roofing project. Steve, did you want to come up and did you want to come up and talk about the change order? Because then we'll have the phone right after that, so. If there's anything you wanted to add, kind of was what brought it about, maybe already explained that, so.
Okay, there's a change order. I don't have that in front of me right now. It's bad. I do know that I sent off the signed sheet, and so, and Cindy, I think, forwarded on. But what it basically happened was is up there when they were in, tried to turn around fast and the, fasten the rubber to the, to the brick up there. The brick is getting brittle and, and soft enough. They had to turn around fast and plywood to all that, so they could adhere the rubber to it.
Is, is this just in one spot with?
Nope. It was all the way around the whole.
That whole.
Yeah, all perimeter of all the, all the brick up there. Yes. I was hoping they'd have this stuff back earlier than what they did, but it took them a little while, and then, then noticed that they had taxes on to it, so then we had to have a correction on that, and so, so that's what this basically is to, for approval.
So the total amount of the change order is that, that twenty-seven?
Yep. Yep. Twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven, one hundred and thirty-seven.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the change order.
Okay. Second by Waterman. Any other comments, questions?
How does this?
The O and H, O H and T.
That I could not tell you exactly.
I think that has to do with the, the design work.
I believe so. I think, I think that's, yeah, that's the architects' design work.
Yeah, I think that's what the, I'm trying to remember that abbreviation, though.
But that carries the same guarantee or the same.
Yep, they went to guaranteed it with the way it was before, and this was the way they put the plywood on to guarantee the, the lifespan of them, of the product.
How did they pass on that plywood, that if the bricks went?
Well, they, they, what they did is they went and hammered drilled in, and then they found solid spots, and then they would tack the plywood to.
What, so, and the original amount budgeted for this project, how does that, is this?
This would actually, for the whole original, by the time you get the fees on to it, it's going to be just a little greater than, than, than the whole budget amount, but so far, knock on wood, kind of my repair bill has been a little bit minor this year on the courthouse, so I'm hoping that I won't have to do contingency on the courthouse this year, so.
Yep, it's just one of those things you don't know.
Well, until they dig into it, yep.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. Let's move on then to item number ten, discussion possible action regarding change of county phone system. This has been quite a process, hasn't it?
This is, yes, it has been quite a process. You know, and of course, you know, I can't devote all the time. There's a lot of other things going on, so kind of work on it when I can and stuff. One of, one of the things that I do know that a couple of the carriers, you know, like to get this in action soon because of infrastructure, but, you know, like it is, it's, it's discussion and possible action. So basically, on the top of the list that I have here, it's carrier access. BIT had reached out. This is a new organization that handle, will be handling some of the landline system. They had reached out and gotten three bids. I do not know who the other two were, but they had recommended MIDCO, and of course, there, there is what the price cost was. One thing that was not on their list was their call forwarding, voicemail. Don't know what those charges are. It could reflect back to what, what was prior to what we were getting charged through, through a Loom or, or Century Link and stuff, but I hadn't reached out to find out what those costs were.
So that basically.
Basically, it's the same system we have right now currently. Just leave it. The only thing is, is, is their recommendations with MIDCO, they would have to come in and bring in lines to all the facilities that that would be, so I don't know what infrastructure cost would be added on to it. They never had that in on the details.
This is just.
With that.
Yep.
Yeah, it's just monthly service fees.
Going forward.
Sticking. So sticking with analog, not going.
Right. And I believe this probably pretty well, probably coincides pretty close to what Century Link costs are right now, except for we are paying fourteen cents a minute currently right now with Century Link, where, you know, for long distance, and it is, their rate was five cents a minute. So that would have been.
We don't really know how many long distance.
Um, I think Cindy sent me, it was, I think, almost six thousand dollars, close for a two-year process of what she sent me last spring, so about thirty-five hundred dollars in long-distance phone calls every year and stuff, so.
Add that on to it, plus whatever the other costs are, and infrastructure. Okay.
The next on there was Blue Peak. Of course, they gave their presentation. Some of these numbers are changed a little bit from what she had presented, because she had five phones for the commissioners. So I had told her, I said, I'm going to adjust it to what each department has and keep everybody all equivalent on that process, and she, and they were fine with that. So I took the numbers off of that and calculated all the numbers, and so I had, I did get a reply back, and I think I forwarded it to a couple this morning on the question was, is elevator and fire. Those there are the charges. If one of the things was there's handheld, some of the departments want handhelds, that would be an additional extra cost on to that. Up, up charges on them, but I wanted to keep everything simple right now, because as I explained in the letter when I sent you, some things might change. It depends on what departments of phones, what they would like. So based off all that, the, in the square boxes, on the numbers that I have here, it would be with Blue Peak of one thousand five hundred and twenty-three fifty a month, and that would be a total of fifty-four phones, seven fax, and five fire fire and elevator lines. They also have, for five dollars per phone, you could do a ULC. Basically, it would be a Um, you could put this program on your phone. It would go to your phone. It would go to your laptop. However, devices you want to have that connected to.
So it's an app.
It's an app.
So that's five dollars a line.
Yep. Five dollars a phone line. But I did not include that because I wanted to keep simple just for the fact of phones itself. It's.
Those are the extras.
Yep. Those are the extras. And of course with, um, midco, um, did the same thing there and theirs is a little bit different system. What they did is it's, it's a per phone charge, which are fifty-four, uh, or fifty-four phones, but they have what they call phone lines. At twenty dollars, that's what's considered the facts in the elevator and fire lines. That's why those numbers, there's twelve altogether. So their charges, that would be a monthly fee, which came to. One thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars per month. Of, of B charges. Plus. The charges, both of them had for installation charges. One charge would charge one rate of two hundred and ninety-nine dollars for. Blue Peak with, um, midco, they had individual charges, but they would wipe all those charges for installation charges. So. So that bottom line, and so that of the charges, well, it says wipe insulation charges. So those charges there. Um, midco would wipe those charges.
So it would be zero.
That was our upfront charge.
So we wouldn't pay that.
What's that?
They, they would be wiped.
They would be wiped away.
And that probably.
Yep. That means gone.
It's gone. Okay.
So did they say too with the internet? I guess.
They did not. I did not ask and so bad on that. And, um, so bad. So that's why I wanted to keep somewhat just for our monthly. Um, but I could, we can reach out and what they would charge for each. I do know one of the things and so we had. At the extension building down here, they have one nineteen with, with Blue Peak. Currently right now I pay a hundred and eighteen dollars. For midco out there for the extension. The bag building itself, but there's also internet at the office too. So that would have to be figured. However, Blue Peak would, would quote that one too. So. Cause right now midcode does not, the, um. Server for that, for the internet is basically the egg building itself. And then there's a server for the extension building separate. And those fees, I could not tell you exactly what they do. I don't see them as well. And so that, so.
And that would be ongoing, ongoing.
That would be ongoing charges. Yes. Also, um, reached out to Verizon, um, currently right now, the detention center, um, the sheriff's office and, uh. Um, emergency management has Verizon voice system over there. So reached out to them and they gave me some phone quotes since that, um. And it came, and so I broke that down and this was where it probably gets a little more complicated. Um, what they did is they turned around and they had, um, phones and what they put. And I had to adjust it just because of the amount of phones in the courthouse. Cause there was, there was one missing, but otherwise they had. Um, originally they had forty-three phones. I put forty-four phones. They are not charging anything for a phone. They're one that you would have to purchase their, their, their equipment. But they were not going to charge for any desktop phone at all because of the amount of volume of phones that we had. They were going to turn around and drop those charges listed before that is the LTE. What they are is basically their, uh. Their phone that can tech, connect to the internet, to the rising internet service. And why this came about is because they wanted me to do a speed test for each location. So I ran a speed test.
So this is a wifi.
Yeah. Well, I'll, I'll, I did a, yeah, I'll explain. I did a, a speed test for every location. And on the internet service that we have now, and it was to support how many phones it could be supported at each location. And I believe without quick, I could try to, try to quick look, but I believe it was, could handle sixty-seven phones. In the courthouse, besides what internet usage that was going on.
Okay.
At that.
In addition to.
In addition to, yes.
Do it on a Tuesday while we're live streaming.
It, it does make sense, but, but I, but I did, I did run that test and I ran it and had, um, at the extension building. Um, at the, in the egg bill, had them run that test, um, ran the, had Rick do it out at the highway shop. Had, and then at the weed shed, I ran it and at the, um, uh, park, I ran it. And park and weed shed has data trucks. Well, the download and upload was really, really low and slow. So they asked me to, to take that off. Uh, I was doing it on my phone. So they asked me disconnect. The wifi and run off of their, their LTE system. When I did, it was double. The upload and download. So their suggestion was going with this phone device. For that, and that would be the internet service through, through, through them. So.
So the internet, so you'd switch the internet service to them?
Yes.
And then, okay.
Yep.
And that's.
And that.
Are those charges included in?
Those charges are included. That was on the basis of with the twenty dollars. So.
Okay.
That's the LTE.
Yep. Yep.
So the, but the internet service, so we get rid of the internet service.
Well, not here, but it was more or less for the locations out at those out landing where I don't have no breaks, you know.
Stitching building.
Yes. Well, no, it'd be weed shed. And, uh, park where I have, well, where it's a data truck.
Right. Okay.
And so that, where there's no hard lines coming to it.
So it's basically like a cell phone on you.
It's basically a cell phone on you. Yes.
I know. Yeah.
And they wanted me to test it for sure inside the office because it was inside buildings. So they wanted me to do those tests there because it could interfere enough with frequency.
So when they're doing the speed tests for the desk, so for the desk phones, I mean, those working off of voice, those are working off our present internet setup.
Yes.
So was that, does that speed test apply to those phones as well?
No.
Okay.
That should be a separate network.
That's a separate, yeah, that's a separate entity. Yeah.
Separate network. So it's not coming off.
No, it's not coming off.
I like the idea of staying up to date with VoIP. I'm a little concerned that that's going to be a, a greater demand on the bandwidth, where, you know, sorry, current.
Yeah. And I, I, yep, I understand that. So.
And Brad, Brad can explain because they've had it over there for a while. If you've had any issues, you want to come up and maybe just. He can kind of maybe explain to you.
We have.
How it's.
I know, I know it works. It's just, you know, if we're going to add all that internet, basically all that internet traffic.
Right.
To, do we, do we have enough bandwidth? Or do we need to create a look at additional internet service?
It is a, a, additional internet. Yes. Yep. I understand that.
Right now for S, the county, the courthouse and the sheriff's office, we have SDN. Um, that's what we use. Reason we use that is we actually have a line. Um, connected to the nine-one-one center for the backup nine-one-one center here. Uh, so that's paid out of nine-one-one funds that we have left over in our pot here for the county right now. So. Switching on SDN would be kind of difficult just, uh. With the connections there. And I think in the treasurer's office also has, um. Some concerns about switching from SDN to with some of their software stuff. So Verizon, you can use SDN.
Yeah, you can.
The backbone.
Yep. Yeah. We can use our, our current infrastructure that's set up there. And right now I think we're set at a hundred. Kicked it by a hundred speed.
Yeah.
Yeah, a hundred megabytes. Uh, right now, I'm actually, I could call and see if it's, if there's another step about that.
You have to, you have to buy more bandwidth when you got your voice system or your, what you had was adequate.
We, we have, there's more than enough. Um, when they were saying that there, you said sixty-seven, they said when I was doing it, there's more than enough or even way more than that if you needed to.
Okay. That, I mean, that's kind of a question I, I have still on, you know, for you that.
Yep.
Cause I like the idea of staying up to date, you know, it's like, you know, for a universal system that's going to do a good.
We've had VoIP phones in the city for several years now and we haven't had any issues.
No, I, I.
Good reliable infrastructure.
Yeah. I've used them in my previous career and they're, they're good, but it's just, you do have to be aware that they're, they're taking bandwidth and, and so.
Well, it sounds like we have the capability of raising that if we need to.
I guess I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure about that in the courthouse. So that's what I want, I want to.
Right now, yeah, we share. We share a line that comes into the detention center and goes into a router and it splits off to the courthouse and to the detention.
No, I, I get it.
So I don't know how much, yeah.
I want a firm answer though about, you know, from, you know. Yep. What, whether, you know, do we need to somehow buy more bandwidth if we're getting, if we do this?
Before I went and, um, switched over to Verizon myself, I checked with SDN and they did some tests of how much we were using. We were using thirty.
You know, how many?
Mega, mega bytes or something like that. That was kind of the peak.
How many phones did you guys add when you did it?
Uh, we upgraded. We have twenty-three phones and ten, I think it's like ten lines. So one line we split off.
Right, right.
So we have twenty-three phones left out.
And now they're pushing speeds that are gigabytes.
Yeah.
I mean, so.
Yeah.
The data that's going through is amazing.
And hardly any of the, the bandwidth that we could be using amongst the whole courthouse.
Yeah. And with, so, and the phones, so the Verizon, when the, the LTE phone some kind of cool.
LTE is basically would be just for an offsite for the, for the, because there'd be one for the shop out at the park, one for the, uh. Um, office at the park, um, and then at the weed shed.
And so.
That's why.
With I, any of these quotes would, so all the phones would be, would be hardwired or etherneted.
They'd be all ethernet except for those three units.
Alright. Okay.
Yep. Because of, there's no internet service coming into those facilities besides data truck. You could connect it to it and utilize it, but. Like I said, when I did the speed test, it was just a lot slower.
You're going to be limited to what their speed is if you connect it to them. So that would be pointless.
And, and as Brad had made a comment, he said they had, when you said ten lines and, and twenty-some phones, and that is one thing they did down here. Monthly charge fifty-two phones. That would be considered each one having their own line. Now you could connect, for an instance, you could connect. Have you, you have two phones in here. They could be both connected. You'd only be charged for one line. So those numbers can reflect to go way down depending on the office. What each office needs would be. So it could almost go in half of those monthly charges. Right now, what I have, what they have here at monthly charges is one thousand forty dollars. Though those can reflect. Besides that, if we'd go this way, uh, with Verizon. Brad would be the main hub. It would go underneath his account. Then there would be a sub account for the others. And so that. He would then, he gets charged right now twenty-five dollars per line. They would reduce that down to twenty dollars because of the amount of, of subsidized phones is too. So.
So, um, a couple of other quick little questions. So like what's this, like what's this conference phone that turned ninety-five dollars? Is that a monthly rental?
No. Well, the, the conference phone, they charge for a conference phone here. Um. That would. Alright. Yep. You purchase that phone. Yep. You would purchase this phone unit. And you could, it would be a number signed to it. And if you needed to, you could take this to any location. Right now Brad has one for.
And I could bring it up here and plug it in and it'll work.
So it works off wifi.
Yep. Works off of wifi or ethernet, however.
Mine's just ethernet.
Right. I try to, some, we try to stream our meetings off wifi. We've tried several times where that's dropped. That's a little.
Uh, yeah, I know. You've had a few, yeah, it's happened here, wifi dropping.
About once every two months. And.
But we're pushing a lot more through that than we're going to be pushing through a voice phone call. We're pushing a lot of video streaming data.
Right.
And so.
That's where.
That's taking a lot of bandwidth.
A lot of bandwidth.
Now, now this is adequate for today. Will it be adequate in five years?
You mean as far as the, the equipment, the cost?
Bandwidth and everything else.
Yeah. It, it, you know, then that, that might be the, who knows the question, you know?
Technology changes.
Well, day to day.
One day you're outdated.
I mean, it's no difference in our computers and so.
But theoretically.
Yeah, it should.
Yeah.
Because with some of these, the voice system, they'll, you'll download different apps sometimes for things to, uh, updates or whatever. It's kind of just like your cell phone.
They'll. And, and that is one thing that you will have here also with it. You could turn around and you would have like Brad has one talk. So basically his phone at his office, basically if it calls in, he can answer.
Goes to his cell.
For every one of those lines that you pay for, you'd get an app for your phone and you could have two people on that app and you can make phone calls from the sheriff's office line.
Okay.
So I.
And that's included of this one.
That's okay.
That's included.
I have that on my phone. So I'll forward, I've got it set up on my VoIP phone. It works so that it'll forward to my cell phone if I'm out at the office. And it'll actually show me that it's my office number calling.
Yep.
So I won't be able to see who's calling, but I'll see that it's coming from my office phone.
Yeah.
And they will only see your office phone number. So that way they don't get your personal.
And, and that's the same thing. It reflects back to that five dollars a month for each. With, with. But this is all included.
System like Verizon system over there. I've had our system, it was, uh, right before COVID hit. So. January, December of eighteen, nineteen, somewhere in there.
Nineteen is when.
Yeah. It was somewhere in there. So it was before COVID had, like I said, we did use it a lot before that. We could. Unplug a phone and move it to a different part of the building. And, um, we've actually used them for, for storms. If we have a big storm coming in. Um, I've had the office gals unplug your phone and go help Andrew downstairs at the EM office. So we can still answer our phone calls and then you're in a safe area. So, but also helping him. So it's been really handy for that part of it as well. One other thing that I did at the sheriff's offices through Verizon is I bought a cradle point. And I have it set up. So if we do have a, a sever in our internet, we still have backup internet that'll kick on and it'll. We can have our phones and have the backup internet. So we can still run our zirper, run our.
So is that like a, a cradle point? Is that like a big wifi hub?
Yeah, kind of. It's a wifi hub that sends.
From the cloud, probably.
So it's two and a half years that you've had this or two and a half years, maybe a little more. You were saying this is relatively trouble free.
Yep. Like I said.
I liked your, you, you use all the features that it gives you. Uh, it's easy to use, uh.
User friendly. Yeah. Like I say, it's been, I like it. It's been really good.
How's their backup? How's their, how's their support?
Support issue. Um, really good. Uh, there's a company that comes and helps set up, uh, Daniel Oswald, like Dial Tone, I think is what his name is. He's hired through Verizon to kind of help set up and do everything. Um, if you have an issue with Verizon, you can log onto their portal and you can deal with it, or you can. Call our rep and he'll jump on.
Yeah. Our, the rep until that, um, he pretty well will respond pretty well as fast as he can, you know, with all the other ones.
Do you pay a monthly maintenance fee then?
Just that monthly, uh, twenty-five dollars right now per line.
Yeah. Per line is what, yep.
Or twenty.
It will be twenty.
Speed or maintenance fee contract.
Yep.
No, no contract.
Yep.
Question on the faxes. That was included. That's seven fifteen dollars a month. Is that correct?
Yep.
Um, just to, just last question, going back to the internet and bandwidth question. So. If it turns out, so I, I hear what you're saying that it's solid. So they, they gave you some, they didn't think that we'd have to increase the.
No, not, not according to what Verizon didn't think we needed to.
Okay. So.
Because of the use.
If it's, if it came to.
The test would be, yeah, would be right now for Verizon, but.
Then, um, if, if we needed to in the future, does, uh, can we get more bandwidth from our current provider if we have to?
That would be a question asked. Um, Brad or some, I'm sure they was, a lot of them do. Um, because I think at the extension building right now, it's two hundred megabytes out at the, at, in the, in the egg building. And there was a question back was, oh, you don't have enough bandwidth. You need to increase it. So then I had somebody came in and tested. They said. You well efficient enough for what, you know, your biggest peak is going to be is like the farm show or some of them events. But they did run a test and it was well efficient enough.
And I think that was updated because now the last few years, we haven't had as many issues during the farm show with individuals, I think.
Yeah. And stuff. And then I guess if you really want to test, you know, Brad would probably have no problem. Having somebody go test. If somebody, yep.
I mean, sounds like.
The, the thing about it is, is one thing about this is, is you put a line through it. For an instance, if somebody, for an instance, would call the auditor's office, right now the line would be tied up. Currently with a voice system, somebody else can call in and you could have a couple of lines. So it's, there, there's going to be less downtime for people trying to call with the system. And if you need it for it, you can go and put in the phone, go send it off to somewhere else if they need to. So.
And with some of these quotes, you know, there's differences and, well, I guess you tried to, you did try to, thank you for trying to make this as much apples to apples.
I try to get it as. Tried to get as much apples to apples like, but that's why I, that's why I had to tweak, because like for an instance, Blue Peak ended up had. Five phones for here and like, boy, wait a minute, wait a minute, um you know, this is, and I think she was thinking each individual had a phone sitting in front of them, so.
Yes, yep, I think we're ready, uh are we ready to make a decision? Do you wanna mail it over for a week? Does somebody wanna make a suggestion which one to go with, make a motion?
If you can do that, you know, we could, we could increase.
So. One thing is is they will come in, they'll train, they do on and on and on training.
We did.
For the phone system.
I just have to stop. We had called the question.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Now we can have more discussion. If there's any.
They're all good companies, but these are right and well, well established, even even about them. Uh we've had experience with them, we've got. No sales can try to tell us something, and I feel very comfortable going with that.
Okay, so a motion a second to go with Verizon VoIP, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Thanks for all your work, Steve.
Thanks for the work.
This has been something.
This was a very complicated issue and.
This thing has been stressing me for a long time.
Be de-stressed.
Yep, now, now it's depending on the next.
Thank you for your input on that, Brad.
All right, item number eleven, action to reappoint highway superintendent Rick Hartley per SDCL thirty one dash eleven dash one. This is for a two twenty four month ending now um in October one of twenty twenty four.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen.
Oh, second.
Second by Gable. Any comments, questions?
Do you remember what brought this? We never used to do this, Cindy, up until what, two years ago?
Yeah, we did it every two years.
But when Rick Small was here, I don't know.
It may have been overlooked.
This state law that we do it.
Thirty one eleven.
So I don't know, I don't know why when Rick was here. I I know. We may have done it once or twice, but it just got overlooked, I believe.
Could you give us a reason why?
It's just what legislators have done, so for whatever reason.
I think we had that discussion about at one point, after the reappointment, it was like, are we doing this or should we be doing this? We researched it and said, oh yeah, we should be doing that.
I was just wondering what brought it on. What's the history behind it?
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Look at the legislative journal.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion carries. Item number twelve, action to accept the Department of Health DOH Health Improvement Innovation Grant. Social Service Strategic Planning, Marketing and Authorized Share to Sign the Consultant Contract. Sarah, you can come on up here. You kind of talked about this last week, but I'll let you go into detail.
A lot of tiny words in this thing.
I know, I and I looked through most of them too, um they looked through it. We had the attorney look at it, so that's good, um yeah, this is just the formality of accepting the grant that we had. Um you guys had approved me applying for in August, we did apply for it, we've um it's been. We received the grant technically, and so this is that we would accept that grant.
Did we give the whole twenty five?
Twenty five thousand, and this grant is for the marketing services, so it would market the strategic planning and social services for.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion by Gable.
And that would authorize the chair to sign.
Do I have a second to that?
Well, second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any other comments or questions?
Just to recap, so there's, this is just a hundred percent grant, it's not, there's no match or.
No match, yeah, we, I mean, we will have to pay it out and then get reimbursement, but it'll all. It's a wash, yeah.
I like.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, item number thirteen, Cindy, you want to mention how this all came about?
Uh the state of South Dakota uh changed the administrative rule on mileage reimbursement for elected officials. Currently, Coddington County follows the state law, and elected officials are paid a different mileage rate than our other employees. Who are paid the IRS, the federal, current federal rate. So um elected officials are held to the state rates. Basically, this would change our mileage rate from forty two cents a mile to fifty one cents a mile per our policy.
So move.
All right, motion by Waterman.
And actually, it's just a note because it's already in our policy, so it's just a note that this is changing.
No motion.
Uh per per policy, so we don't.
We don't really have a choice.
Yeah, it's in our personnel policy that we pay elected officials, the state rate, I just wanted everybody to know that the state has changed. Um the mileage rate based on, I assume, fuel prices.
Yeah.
Sixty point point six five something.
It's it just went up, yeah.
Yeah, I knew it up to my first, and and this takes effect September twelfth, so.
So it's in place.
Yep, it is in place now.
All right, item number fourteen, action to approve claims for payments.
Uh today we have salary claims.
Like Steve's gonna be gone in months of.
So the district weed meetings and.
District meetings, but but also they now have a steel conference.
Is that where all the mosquitoes come together?
All right, I will just give you a dollar amount because I don't know what. Uh September salary claims are in the amount of.
Brenda, do you wanna just go down to sixteen?
She's got the other one here.
Oh, sorry, that gets there, I just didn't see it. Total salary claim, six hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and ninety one dollars and twenty four cents. For the month of September.
Motion by Gable. I'll second it, second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, that motion carries. Now we have credit card.
This is an automatic supplement.
Okay.
Uh we have two automatic budget supplements. The first one is for the welfare office with the ERA funding. Toll is a hundred and four thousand, four hundred and thirty three dollars and twenty cents, which we can put back into their budget. Because of the grant money received, and then we also have the Roden Bridge Hall rail restoration, we have one bill come out of that line item. In September, and that is six hundred and sixty five dollars.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Comments, questions? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Item number sixteen, approve personnel changes. Move on to travel requests then. Item number seventeen.
Uh travel, we need a pest department. Like we have three requests to um. To attend district re meetings in a variety of places. And then we have request to send our senior maintenance tech to the twenty twenty two annual safety and loss conference. And the state attorney has requested authorization for herself and her deputy to attend the mid-year state's attorney conference.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Item number eighteen, public notices, possible quorum of commissioners could be at.
Tonight, there is a. Public meeting out at the uh. The readiness center.
Yep.
In reference to um the National Guard facility out there in the runoff, and there might be a quorum out there.
Yep, and also Thursday night first district picnic at five o'clock.
LEPC today at noon.
That's only a couple of us, or maybe three, could be three.
The chamber has a a thing and then there's this Ukrainian chaplain speaking at the bridge church too, so.
Okay.
Lots of stuff.
I don't have anything else till next Tuesday, all right. Um old business, is there any? New business?
Just to put a plug in everybody's ear, um the uh. Recall, we have a law, the county has to provide a law library, a public law library. Um and we worked a uh, I guess, a a plan with the city library to. Use their public internet terminals to to subscribe to that, well, that subscription's coming due to, so I'm working on that, just let everybody know the. Let everybody know the price is gonna go up, it goes up every year. If you if you take their subscription for a longer period of time. It goes up a little less every year, so anyway, just that's coming, so they'll probably be on the agenda the next couple weeks as long as we can get some clarity on that.
So do you lock that in for several years then because of that?
Yeah, we locked it in for us, usually we, whenever we've done it, I think we've had it for five, about five years now. And the, I think we've renewed it once, um and I'm trying to just go through memory, and the longer, you know, if you take that sale. A three year versus a one year subscription, you'll get a better deal.
Better, right.
Just so people know what we're talking about, it is an online legal uh reference service that the public has access to at the public library, so. If you're not sure how to do that, just ask a librarian, they'll point you to the right computers where it is, but it's a good system.
State law, the county has to provide it. The other, the other thing that county or the state law provides for is you you can, there's a law library fund that's. Um funded by um basically court fees, court fines and fees, and so um. For the most part, that's been able, so far we've been able to cover the cost of law library with that money, so it's not coming out of tax. So, so it's coming out of a, you know, a state established fund from the UJS.
So it's been sufficient up till now.
Yeah, so.
There's been no other.
But we have to, we have to go through the trouble of coordinating it, because that's the law, so.
Yep, all right. Do we have anything for the open?
Ye- yes, I do, I have a, uh this is uh Jody, there is annually evaluation. And I've been doing it for, I guess, twelve years, and somebody knew was is, she must have a new supervisor now. And so it's a little bit different, and he just indicated that if we wanted to do it as a group. We could, or whatever our choice was, and uh and uh anyway, is it all right if we're going to do it?
You're the liaison, that's how we've been doing it, so we wouldn't wanna have a quorum, so. Yep, sounds good.
I'll get her done.
Anyone else have anything for the open? We do have a need to go into executive session under number one, discussion of personnel issues. And contracts, okay, in contracts.
So move.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries, we are in executive session, there will be no action after.